Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 31st, 2023, meeting of the Barstool Planning Board. This is a special planning board meeting this evening held at 6:00 PM by remote participation methods. The meeting notice has been previously filed with the town clerk in accordance with, stand by, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law. To participate in this evening's meeting, access has been provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via Channel 18 and may be viewed via the Channel 18 website Real-time access to the planning board meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided below. Public comment can be addressed to the planning board by utilizing that Zoom link and telephone number and meeting ID provided below. The phone number to call in is 888-475-4499 and tonight's meeting ID 838-12246652. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required or entitled to appear before the planning board may appear remotely and may participate through the link or telephone number provided. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting, so they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Application materials may be accessed by contacting Karen Herrend at karen.herrend@town.barstlema.us or calling 508-862-4064. And we will now call this meeting to order and introduce our board members and staff, starting with Bob.
All right, good evening, Bob Twiss.
And Mary.
Good evening, Mary Barry.
And Ray.
Good evening, Premi Sexton.
And it doesn't, and Tim?
Good evening, Tim O'Neill.
And again, my name is Steve Robichaud. It doesn't look like other members have joined yet. Also introduce town staff, Karen.
Good evening, Karen Herrend, Administrative Assistant, Planning and Development.
Thank you, Karen, and Jim.
I'm Chris, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
Excellent, and our notice of recording this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. And I'll now inquire whether anyone else is taking this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Seeing none, we'll continue to the first part of our meeting, which is general public comment. This is public comment not related to any of the agenda items this evening. And if anybody is here this evening for general public comment, please make your presence known, state your name, and make your comment. Seeing none, we will move on to the first item this evening, which is A and R. Tim, if you could take that away.
Sure, this is, approval not required plans. Ropes Farm LLC has submitted a plan entitled Plan of Land at 135 Putnam Avenue in Barnstable, Katuat, Massachusetts, dated April 24th, 2023, for an approval not required plan. This is not a public hearing.
Excellent, thank you, Tim. And do we have the applicant here this evening to present?
Yeah, good evening, my name is Rich LaRue. I am the author of the plan from Cape Sur.
Great, thank you, Rich. Please make a presentation and take it away.
Well, the purpose of the plan is to divide a fairly large piece of property in Katuat into three buildable lots, each of which has more than the minimum acreage, more than 150 feet of frontage on, on a major roadway, Putnam Ave. And yeah, I guess that's pretty much it. They meet the shape factor, and I think everything else is pretty much self-explanatory. One lot is about 90, about 2.2 acres. The other lot is 2.64 acres. And the third lot is 6.9 acres, and that is their upland area. And each has at least 150 feet of frontage on Putnam Avenue.
Great, okay, appreciate that. Everything looked to be relatively straightforward. Jim, anything to add?
No, only that Putnam Ave is a public paved way. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. And we'll go to the board for any questions, comments, concerns. Bob?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Mary?
All set, thank you.
All right, and Ray?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and Tim?
I'm all set, thank you.
And I am also all set. Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Ropes Farm LLC Plan entitled Plan of Land at 135 Putnam Ave in Barnstable, Katuat, Mass.
And I will second.
Great, thank you. And all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. The motion passes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening and stay cool.
Well done. Pretty piece of land, enjoy it.
I know it, it's beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is general business. We have a presentation from UTIL, the Towns Consulting Design Team. And Jim, if you could kind of give us an overview of what we're going to be talking about this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So this is the design guidelines, the full title, The Downtown Hyannis Unified Design Guidelines and Regulations. And that, yes, that title has gotten longer since the last time we've been here. About a month or so ago, our team at UTIL presented kind of the interworkings of what we're looking to do in terms of creating exactly what the title says, Unified Design Guidelines for both the Planning Board and the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, as they have overlapping jurisdictions with the Planning Board then expanding beyond that downtown core. So both the Hyannis Historic has design guidelines now, and the Planning Board has what's known as the Design and Infrastructure Plan. And within that plan are some design features. They don't necessarily agree with each other. And so this is a, is an attempt to unify those design standards as well as expand upon them. As you may recall from our last discussion, with the new zoning downtown, it begins to develop design features, and this really grows from that and defines it even further. So with that, you do have in your package this week the new updated draft design guidelines and regulations that really do spell out and much more detail than in the past kind of what regulations are required, and that's with the Historic Commission and the guidelines that are both Historic and the Planning Board. So with that, the hope is, and I know Andrea is here from UTIL, who can assist in furthering this conversation, but the hope tonight, if the Planning Board agrees that we're moving in the right direction, my ask would be if the board would offer a motion of support for the design guidelines as they stand today. And with that support, we will be going to the Hyannis Historic on Wednesday to do, to review the draft guidelines, and then from there, go to the public. So we'll be posting and announcing to the public that we have this draft for their consideration. We will take in that public comment and then present back to this board and the commission with the hopes that we can seek adoption at that time. So Andrea, if there's anything further, you're welcome to get away.
Great, thank you, Jim. I'm gonna share my screen. Everyone see my screen? Great. Okay, well, thanks, Jim, for the introduction. So as Jim was saying, these guidelines have evolved. We've been working closely with the working group, which is composed by members both of the Planning Board and the Historic Commission to help us refine these regulations and guidelines. So tonight, we wanted to give a quick overview of what these regulations and guidelines include and a sneak peek of some of, some of the sections. And then we want to open it up for discussion. I know that last week, Jim shared the latest version of the document with you all, and we want to know if there are any comments or feedback from what you saw in the document. So the, as Jim was saying, the purpose of these regulations and guidelines is to complement the existing zoning. So we really looked at the zoning and see what are the, how are these regulations and guidelines adding to the zoning through dimensional standards like setbacks, number of stories, building height, and building width? And how will they also inform choices around design related to things like color, materiality, articulation, et cetera? And as Jim was saying, this is also an effort to coordinate between the commission and the town in the project approval process, and at the end to provide outcomes that are desirable from the developers and architects. So when we started working on these, the first thing we did was look at what the zoning currently includes and how the guidelines on the left, you see what the zoning includes, and on the right, we started to think about what are things that the guidelines could go more into depth? And what are new things that we could include in the guideline to complement what already exists in the zoning? So for example, the zoning already has maximum building length, and the guidelines add to that by talking about facade length and rhythm and articulation. And then in red, you'll see things, new things that were added in the guidelines, such as things around materials, color, et cetera. And we did this for parking considerations as well and for site and landscape considerations. Where do these guidelines and regulations apply? So you can see here with the red line, this is the area where the guidelines and regulations would apply. And this is a structure for the guidelines and regulations. So as you know, as you've seen, the name has become longer. So now we have a first section, which includes the regulations, which is what you see on the left in the pink box. And on the right, we've included the guidelines. So the regulations are required, whereas as the guidelines are suggestions. And you'll see, you probably saw the difference of the, of the language between those two sections. So some examples of regulations. This is around building form. We included things like multiple massings and certain rules to attain facade length and rhythm. The intent behind this is to ensure that the, the new pattern, the new buildings are in character with the existing build patterns. And we support an evolution of buildings over time. And then we also have regulations around the way the facade is treated. So we've included in the appendix a list of colors that are allowed for the different building components. So you'll see the brighter colors, such as the yellow or this pink here are recommended for the doors, whereas more neutral colors, such as Disneyport Blue, the gray are recommended for shingles, doors and shutters for more, for more elements in the body of the building. And then we've also included regulations around things like materials. For example, prohibiting certain types of materials, like aluminum or vinyl siding, regulations around fenestration, prohibiting certain type of windows. And we've referenced back to, to the frontage zones to require a certain type of, of frontage types for different building types and restricting certain materials in the shop fronts. We've also included regulations around parking design, things like where the access to parking should be located so as much as possible. If possible, it should be on the rear or the side of the building. We've included regulations around how to minimize the number of curb cuts, how we can shared, share parking along adjacent lots, et cetera. And some guidelines around parking designs, such as including some landscape buffers in parking.
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure we're distinguishing between regulations and guidelines. Is that correct?
Yes.
So when you have, it says guidelines, that's like a primer. But the other parts, as a couple of slides back, as, as an example, that's a regulation, right?
Exactly.
After, okay. I just want to make sure we were clear on that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And real quick, and to that point, so the regulations are key in that when applying to the Hyannis Historic Commission, those are required, and then the, the Hyannis Historic must, must then act on that specific regulation, meaning they are granting that or they are granting a waiver from the regulation for the planning board. Though they are spelled out as regulations, you are using this whole document as your guide for design features. Whenever there's a special permit application before you within the growth incentive zone, so you are, you are the permit granting authority for all special permits in that growth incentive zone. And this essentially replaces the design section, which is a very small section, in the design and implementation plan or infrastructure plan, excuse me. Yeah.
That's great. That's helpful, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, right, go ahead.
I, I had a question, and I'm afraid that as we go along, I might forget it. It was about the, an earlier slide about the aligning with existing build patterns.
Yeah, hit it now.
I, I wanted to ask exactly what does that mean? Because some of the existing build patterns right now are, are pretty crummy. So exactly what does that mean? And how does that interface with the new zoning ordinance that did, has suggested, if you will, zoning through form as opposed to use? So could you explain the, the connection between the two?
Yes, thank you. So in this one, we're showing two, two regulations. One of them is around massings. So we're requiring that when a building is made of more than one massing, that no more than two massings are oriented in the same direction, as you can see here. So starting the third massing, you would need to have a different orientation. And we're also requiring that there should be an offset between each massing of a minimum of seven feet, as you can see in this, in this sumin.
If I could just interrupt for a second. My, the gist of my question is, what does it mean, align with existing built patterns? And does that mean that if there's an old, an old building that the renovation has to maintain the, the old, you know, the rundown or the quaint exterior? Or how exactly does that work? That's, that's the thrust of my question as opposed to the massing part.
Yes. So the, the idea behind this is, and sorry, maybe I didn't phrase it correctly when I first explained it, but it doesn't necessarily mean that if the, the buildings nearby are, as you described, it has to adapt to that. What we're looking at here is to, even if we have larger building footprints, to break up the mass, and that's why we've created these, these rules to help break up the mass, so that the new developments are more attuned with a Cape Cod vernacular, where we have smaller masses and not a big mass, singular mass building. So that's, that's the gist of it.
Right, and to build on that, so right, so let's say we have a building on, on the corner lots that's gonna remain, and it has a gable. That next structure that's gonna go next, if they're gonna add an addition, they now need to think about either setting it up or back or rotating it like the second feature here on the, on the screen. So basically, if you have an existing structure, you need to build off of that utilizing these standards. So you're either shifting that next mass up seven feet or back seven feet to create that dimension or rotating it so that it's, now you're creating an L feature. That doesn't mean you have to retain that existing structure. If you want to just clean slate and start over, you can certainly do that. And, but again, when you're creating a new development, you're also gonna have to meet these design features. Whereas you have a flat structure, and then you're gonna have to go seven back, another flat structure. So it, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to keep your existing structure, but if you are, you still need to meet these standards.
I, I think I follow you, Jim. I guess my, my question was that, like your hypothetical example, that the addition would, at least the addition, besides the massing part, would also have to follow the form guidelines that are laid out in the zoning. You know, there's a variety of forms that were adopted, at least for downtown or Main Street. So if, so hypothetically on Main Street, then not only do we have the massing regulation, but we also have the, the form of how, how this or what this addition would look like. Is this, is that correct?
Right, so yeah, so the, the zoning says basically you have a box, and we want you to move that box close to the sidewalk as much as you can. And we want you to, you know, you can build up to, say, four stories in certain locations. And you have to break it up every, I think it's 50 feet or so. We're also saying when you break it up every 50 feet or so, now you gotta shift it back a little bit, so that's seven feet. So now we're creating dimension, we're adding another layer of features that we're gonna, the whole intent here is taking that box that we're created with the zoning, now creating details on the, on the face of it and around it, around the site in order to, you know, create a, create a project we, we want to see downtown in a very specific way.
Yeah, this is Tim, Andrea's colleague. Sorry, my computer wanted me to completely restart Zoom when I logged in, so I'm finally here. I think it, it's important to understand that zoning comes first. You know, the zoning is, is, you know, the primary regulation. We were very careful, as Andrea explained at the beginning of the presentation, that, that the design, building, the, the design regulations and guidelines that are not zoning makes sense relative to the zoning. So we, we imagine that developers, building owners, their architects, their builders, would start with the zoning, get things more or less in the right place, and then, and then use these regulations and guidelines to make more fine-tuned decisions.
Very good. Thanks, everyone, for edumacating me.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, absolutely.
And it's an enforcement question, actually. So in a number, in a number of places, starting on Roman V, the Building Design Guidelines, there's a number of subsections that address the same issues that are addressed in Roman 1 through 4. Just by way of example, for instance, color. Color is included in 1 through 4, I don't remember where, but it's somewhere in there. And it specifies what colors are appropriate. And then when you come over into the building considerations under Roman V and subsequent, it also addresses color, and what it says in the design guidelines is consistent with what's in the regulations. So that, that's one of the way of example. There's a number of things that, that qualify in, that are the same in both 1 through 4 and also 5 through the end. But there's also things, starting with Roman V, where it says certain things are encouraged. That I think, I didn't, having gone through and made a chart to match up to see if everything that's encouraged is also in a reg. My guess is that it's not 100% overlap. So when we come to enforcement, if someone's looking for a special permit and they're before us, and the guideline says something is encouraged, you know, like shapes of lamps, for instance, or, you know, pick anything that's encouraged. And, and the builder says, wow, that's nice. We know that you're encouraging it, but frankly, we don't like it, and we're not gonna do it. Where does that leave us in terms of enforcement? If it's not something that's also in the reg under Roman 1 through 4, but it's in the guidelines, and a builder decides they're gonna ignore the guidelines, where does that put us in terms of enforcement? Can we say, for instance, we're denying the special permit because we encouraged you and you said, we're not gonna do it? Or do we essentially have to go along and say, well, we want you to do it, but you're not gonna do it, so we're gonna give you the permit anyway?
Right, so yeah, in terms of enforcement, you're, you're spot on in terms of regulation versus guidelines. So regulation is something that is more for Hyannis Historic and their development of, of their certificates of appropriateness in that they will need to waive. But it's very similar to what you're saying or getting to, Bob, in terms of when you're looking at your special permit that is being requested. And say a project comes before you for a very specific request. And with that, we'll just use the lighting feature. There is a design standard that is spelled out here, and they apply for, you know, they, they demonstrate a detail that doesn't meet that. You are certainly well within your rights to state, you know, reflect back on our guidelines and say, no, we would like for you to meet this. Now, you know, it would have to, we would have to take a close look at the special permit and what you're reviewing in order to understand if you can deny a project based on it. But it really more gives you material so that you can definitively request, you know, a, a better product or a better project by, by being able to point back to a guideline. So more often than not, hopefully, we'll be able to work with developers and say, these are part of our guidelines. And, you know, this is what we would very much like for us to see in a project moving forward. And then ultimately, if this is, if you say you approve a special permit with that detail, now it's, it is an enforcement issue where the building commissioner can state that it is in the decision, it is in our guidelines. You have it on your plan, you must, you must comply. But that doesn't mean it, it has to be that, that way. You can certainly, you know, pack this, you're, you are the permit granting authority. You can ignore the, the guidelines if you truly wanted to. you're, you are the permit granting authority, you can ignore the, the guidelines if you truly wanted to. But we're hoping that we create a product that is, you know, that the public believes is, is the, in the right direction and both this board and the commission believes in the right direction. So we would hope that you use this as a tool for development.
But Jim, is it fair to say that the regulations in the left column here with the pink background are in a way non-negotiable, except if a waiver is granted? But everything in the right column with the gray background is discretionary. But in the conversations about a project, the sum total of those decisions are, are, are really up to the planning board to decide?
Yeah, exactly right. And, and if, and if it, if those things on the pink are not waived and it's reflected in a decision, then again, that would be enforcement that we could, we could act on.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is I think as a board, we've gotta be on our game. Because if a special permit or a reg agreement comes before us and, you know, we, we don't have these things in the back of our mind and we don't say them quickly in the process, get to them at the very beginning, then, you know, we, we could get some pushback. Not that we can't, you know, forge ahead through that pushback, but my sense would be, let's talk about at the very beginning what items on the right here that are important to us individually so that they can all be included. And a special permit, Jim, we could put it right in there as conditions, couldn't we?
You absolutely could. And, and to your point, Mr. Chairman, the, you know, getting to them early, that's what this document does exactly. And this is what we've actually heard. Now, we've, we've tossed this out to some develop, developers and their architects who are at the conceptual level of development on, in and around Main Street. And, and they, I, I would, I would say they're close to thrilled. We basically have a whole list of boxes to check. And, and it really paves the way for a quality development that, you know, these architects who wanna do the quality developments, they now can turn to their clients and say, hey, the, the town has this list of, of guidelines that we need to adhere to in order to get through this process smoothly.
Mr. Chairman, but, but to Bob's point, when we negotiate, I, I can think of any number of, of permits or approvals that we've negotiated. We, in mo- in most cases, the applicant is asking for waivers of existing regulations. And that, that is in fact our, our leverage point. What Bob was pointing out is that I, I guess it's conceivable to, to add contingencies from the guidelines, but they are not regulations. They are not hard and fast requirements. So we could say, we really want you to do X, Y, and Z because as, as you said, Steve, early and often. But if, if, you know, the developer says, well, I really don't wanna do it, I'm not, I can't see where we have leverage to really encourage them. That, that's the only, I think Bob's point is well taken.
Yeah, for sure, no question about it. However, you know, if you take a special permit, for example, if in that special permit, we have conditions that state that, you know, these certain things must be met, then that, that's, that's all the teeth we need. And that's for special permit basically will be granted with those conditions. And if those conditions aren't followed, then there is enforcement that, that can be taken. Is that right, Jim?
Right, that, that, yeah, that is absolutely right. And, and it is important to remember that these special permits are waivers from the zoning ordinance itself. So this is really another layer onto, you know, design of an overall project. You know, there, there is, there isn't a mechanism for a special permit for, say, design features. Or at least we, we aren't going there. This is more of a special, this, this would be, for instance, they have one too many curb cuts and they need a special permit from you or they don't have enough parking and they need a, a special permit from you. And, you know, and, or, you know, whatever it may be with it. It's a whole list of relief mechanisms throughout. But also, even if it's a by right project, we spell out that these design guidelines should be, should be met as well. So if it's outside of the Hyannis Historic District Commission, but still within the growth incentive zone, but it doesn't need a special permit, we still are, are asking at least for these design guidelines to be met. And, you know, honestly, our immediate, the immediate reaction from applicants so far have been, have been absolutely, this is, this is the way to do it. This is what the town wants, it's by rights. It's gonna get them through a process very quickly. This is a kind of a different ballgame than, you know, some of these grand projects that we're seeing in the outskirts of town. This is downtown revitalization, which, you know, the architects are looking for guidance, as, at least for right now.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you use that curb cut example, couldn't you say, yes, we will grant you your waiver for this curb cut, but a condition of granting that waiver is that all of the downtown Hyannis design guidelines are met?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If, if you can reflect on the nexus of that curb cut, say, yeah, you, we can grant you an additional curb cut, but that vegetation, the lighting, the screening, it all needs to be met within these guidelines.
And then couldn't you also just have a paragraph in the draft regulatory agreement that says all downtown Hyannis design, designing guidelines must be met?
Yeah, if we got to a regulatory agreement. The hope though is that with the new zoning and these design features, we don't, we may not need to get to a regulatory agreement for, for most cases.
True, it may put the reg agreement process out of business, so.
Jim, can I ask a clarifying question? Because I think this is a good point. Can the board, you know, let's say somebody is pursuing a special permit path and they want an extra curb cut or, or some issue that requires it because of the zoning? Can the planning board make as a condition, will grant that as long as you meet all of the design guidelines? Do they have the right to make that the condition for granting the zoning relief?
Right, so typically with, with special permits, it's, it's that question of nexus. So if, if you have a project before you and you can create a nexus for the condition, I, you know, I, I believe you would certainly be well within your rights to do so. I mean, it would be a case by case basis. But for instance, a curb cut alone has a whole host of features for parking design, site design, landscape design, general site and place making guidelines. So I could see an, almost everything aside from, you know, facade amenities really being applicable there. So it would be a case by case basis, but absolutely, if you have a nexus, I, the, the board is well within their rights to pursue those.
Okay, but it's gotta be connected to the thing that's being given relief somehow. Even there has to be a connection, it can't be a random other condition.
Right, at least that's how historically we've done it. But, you know, we can certainly look at each project.
Mr. Chair, can I come back on a follow up?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I, I don't wanna take too much more of this time because I don't wanna interrupt Andrea's presentation. But he, here's the issue I'm trying to raise. Maybe I was, well, clearly I was inarticulate the first time. But here's the situation I wanna try to avoid. Someone comes in with a proposal that complies with the zoning. It also complies with all the requirements in subpar, in Roman one through four in the regulations. They're not seeking a variance, a waiver, a special permit or a developmental agreement. And they say, we're gonna ignore all of your guidelines that are not contained specifically in a zoning ordinance or in the regulation. It would seem to me, I'm thinking, I'm thinking off the top of my head, the town would have to allow them to build as a matter of right because there's no regulatory thing for the planning board to vote on. It would never come to us. It would have come to the historical commission and they could have signed off on the reg. But there's no one to enforce a guideline which is not in the reg or in the ordinance. And that's what I'm trying to, that's the issue I'm trying to raise.
Yep, yeah, you, you are correct, Bob. And in terms of meaning, if it met every ordinance in our zoning and all of our regulations in the pink there, yes. There's nothing that would say that they have to meet the, the further design guidelines themselves. I would be interested to see how that were to look though, in terms of what would those additional guidelines provide if, like they said, we're not going to do it? Really, you know, it might be, you know, some enhanced bike parking, you know, some other treatments perhaps. But you are absolutely right. There, this, this is a discretionary guideline at that point. If you, if you are meeting everything by rights, the, the guidelines beyond that are discretionary.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's a good point, Bob. I didn't think about if it wasn't going to come to us looking for some sort of a waiver or relief. All right, let's turn it back to Andrea, take it away.
Right, thanks. So I'll talk about some of the guidelines, some examples of the guidelines. We talked about this one, encouraging landscape buffering around parking areas. Another set of guidelines talks about roof types and facade treatments. For example, we encourage façades that use different materials, like this example, as another way to break up the building. And we discourage cases like this where we have a false front. We also address shop fronts in the design guidelines. As I mentioned in the beginning, certain materials are discouraged such as aluminum framing. We encourage certain types of awnings such as the retractable roll down awnings. And we encourage storefront windows to use transparent lacing and avoid tinted glass as a way to create more connection between the, the public realm and those retail or restaurant storefronts. So those were some examples of the types of regulations and guidelines that are included in the document. As I saw in the drafts, there's, there's many more. So we thought we could give a few examples here today. And we've already had great discussion, great feedback with you. But again, open it up to any questions that you have from reviewing the document we shared. And I'm happy to share my screen with the document if we wanna go to certain sections that you had comments or questions about.
We just go around the, the board real quick. Bob, anything coming to mind at the moment?
No, I just wanna commend the, both the staff and the, and the consultants, all the members of the team, as well as the subcommittee that was put together to look at this from, from the two boards, for all the work they've done. I, I think it's an excellent job of putting forth what we, what I think the, most people seem to think are the appropriate ways to go on this. I just wanna commend everybody. I, I didn't see anything in there I didn't like. I'm prepared to, to move forward on it as suggested earlier with a vote of support. Thank you.
Great, well said, Bob. Merritt?
I'm good, I thought it looked really good. I, my biggest thing was is what I had said at the beginning is distinguishing between the guidelines and the regulations. But I'm hoping that because the guidelines are so, not detailed, but it, but it gives something to people, you know, that they can actually take a look at and design around. Oftentimes, especially if it's somebody who isn't necessarily from the area, we want them to be able to at least embrace the architecture that's already in place so that it, it's, it doesn't stand out as a sore thumb. I think of, you know, a couple of buildings in Cambridge that come to mind that, you know, the, the, the old architecture of Cambridge with the brick and, 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 you know, beautiful facades. And then you come to another building that looks like it should be, maybe, you know, in New York City or something. It, it, it just doesn't fit the neighborhood. So I'm happy to see this and I'm happy that this is well defined for anybody who's interested in trying to keep with the, the culture and, and design of, of the area. So thanks so much for doing it, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's great, agree. Tim?
Yes, thank you. I think we had some great questions tonight that answered some of my first couple of subjects that came to mind that I wanted to go into is, you know, the separation of the regulations from the guidelines and how that affects this board going forward for, you know, things that could be going on as of right or how it could go through the historic process, but also what could be coming over to us in kind of reg agreements or, you know, special permits for some of those specific regulations. So I think I got some clarity there. I would also like to commend all the work done thus far by Mutile and the working group. I was very happy to be able to have joined two of the working group sessions and to do the walking tour of East Hyannis. I think a fair amount of us here today was on that for that day. So it's great to see this come to fruition and I think it is a great document for a lot of reasons, between the regulations and nitty gritty, but also the guidelines in having a good set of standards and kind of guardrails and a goal, you know, in mind and for how we're viewing these projects and the historic commission's viewing the projects. But also having it out there for architects, developers, builders. I do have some nitty gritty stuff that comes to mind on the guidelines. This is really minutia things, just given my background, especially in historic restoration and remodeling and construction. Specific to the windows in the guidelines, I noticed that simulated divided lights are encouraged, which I think is great, is a very subtle detail that really improves, I think, the character of a structure and of the area. I did just notice that there was some language about double hung windows being one over one or two over two divided light encouraged. And I just wonder if we should maybe, A, increase that. So, you know, there's a lot of traditional architecture in the area that has six lights over one light. It's a very traditional kind of window pattern that we see around here on Cape or six over six. But also, you know, things like wider windows, they're eight over eight, but also casement windows or awning windows, you know. We kinda maybe wanna think about a maximum pane size and kind of work within that and allow the architects the flexibility if it's a big picture window with divided lights or, you know, how to kind of do that. That's my only nitty gritty thing. I know that this is still very early on in the process. You know, this is kind of just a vote of confidence so that we're going in the right direction. And I think this, this document's great. And maybe this is a good point for, so Jim, can we just, one more time? This is a vote of support tonight and then it goes to the historic commission, I think you said, Wednesday. And if they have a vote of support, then it's released for general public comment, is that correct?
Yeah, that was a thought, that yes, if this board feels comfortable with it at the stage and same with the commission, then we should give it some time and with the public to get an oppo- give an opportunity to comment. And then we'll come back here for, for adoption hopefully in the near future.
Sure. And then if it goes up to kind of the public for general comment, does it come back here or does it go to historic? For, I guess what's the ideal process moved from this point forward? And, you know, the kind of timeline and, and what steps we'll take to implement this?
Yep, so I'd like to give it a solid month for public review of, of a document such as this. And then when it's returned, I would likely have a conversation with the both chairs. Perhaps a joint meeting may work, may make sense for this type of document. Or, or, you know, each separately. But the timing of one versus the other, I don't think is, is vital. It's just that if, as long as both are in agreement and, and ultimately adopt is the goal. uh, the timing of one versus the other, I don't think is, is vital. It's just that if, as long as both, uh, are in agreement and, and ultimately adopt is the goal.
Okay, great. Um, that makes sense. And you know what? Actually, some of my nitty gritty things, you know, just because, uh, you know, my nature and what I do and being nitpicky. Um, I actually, I had actually really liked, um, to hear, um, our newest member, Matt, uh, his thoughts on this, also given his background and uh, construction and design and architecture. Um, and, you know, maybe a fun thing would be if Matt and I, um, took a doc, took the document, uh, after it goes through the historic and, uh, just did some red line as a public comment on it and submitted it as public comment. So I think that's kind of the level that it's at and also very interested to see what the general public would have to say. Um, so it was a little long-winded, but I think this is a great, uh, working document from all the hard work, uh, that we have done, um, from the working group and from, um, Mutile and, um, I'm, I'm glad to see where it has, uh, gone and, um, I think I'd be more than happy to support this to move forward tonight.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that. And outright?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Tim, well said. I, I think, uh, you and Matt are, are great resources to do exactly that. Um, you're the smart guys for the, the nitty-nanny details that I think are important. Um, kudos to everyone involved. Um, I think that this is a, a, a good document. Um, I do have some concerns, uh, about the issues raised by Bob about, um, uh, the usefulness of guidelines, uh, in the permitting process. Uh, I guess we'll probably, um, have to just work that through and see how those apply. Cause I, I don't think that's a showstopper, but it's a concern for sure. Um, and it's really nice to see, um, that we're building on zoning ordinance and giving, uh, meat to exactly, uh, not just, well, a wave of the hand of things ought to be, here's a specific list of what we're looking for. And I really hope, um, I urge the historic commission, um, who up to now, um, don't really, uh, have had a uh, hard and fast set of, of guidelines that I think this is a real opportunity for them to a- adapt something in sync with us. Um, uh, so that we have, um, as we can say, we're all on the same page of music. And, um, and it gives, um, developers, uh, substantive, um, expectations. And I, I too, uh, am supportive of this and, um, am happy to offer a, a motion of support at the appropriate time.
I love it. Well said. Um, great comments. You know, I just wanted to add a couple of things and ask a couple of questions. I remember at one point we talked about kind of the, uh, terminology we were going to use. Trying to not be, um, too weak, but not too harsh. Uh, first of all, overall, I think that we struck a great balance here. Um, I think that it's not too lax, but it's also not too, um, not too intense. Um, specifically talking about the, the siding, you know, um, the section that talks about facade treatment. Um, there's some areas that I just feel like the language is, is just a little too soft. Um, you know, if you look at that section, facade treatment, um, go down onto the, uh, the second page. Um, where it mentions, let's see, cedar shakes and clapboards are preferred materials for most exteriors. Um, yeah, I don't know. It just, um, I wonder if some, some areas like that, we might be able to strengthen a little bit, you know, for me, I think it should be, um, I don't know, maybe a little bit stronger, I guess. And, and something like most e- exteriors, I, I feel like it's just a little bit vague. Uh, I mean, personally, I'd like to see all exteriors, you know, cedar shakes, clapboards or brick. You know what I mean? Um, but again, I don't want to be too, too intense. Yeah, that, that item there. Um, can, can you talk a little bit about how you, you decided to land on, you know, terms like should, um, because if you look at, you know, um, uh, let's see, there's some areas where it's much, it's much more firm. You know what I mean? Um?
Should as opposed to shall, right, Mr. Chair?
Right.
Right, right. E- exactly. Yeah. I don't know if, if, if we could talk a little bit, uh, you know, about why we, um, are using that terminology.
So Tim, yeah, I'm sure you could, you could speak well to this, uh, but I just wanted to highlight that if you s- if you look through the regulation portion of the document, you'll see shals or prohibits. Uh, whereas the guidelines, uh, as you, as you're mentioning Steve, that, that we don't want to be too rigid and that it, it must be cedar shakes because then we, yeah, we could put, move it over to a regulation, but are we, uh, are we confident that every building shall be, like, you know, these three materials? Um, and so I don't think we were there yet at least. Um, and that's why you find it in the guideline to say that it should be this. And yeah, we could probably beef that up that we recommend or, you know, something a little stronger, uh, but not to the level of, you know, required as I guess, but something that it's, it's absolutely a preferred, these are our three preferred that you should choose from perhaps.
And I think it's part of, uh, yeah, I think, uh, ju- just to pick up on what Jim's saying, I, I, I think you're right. I mean, we could probably get the language better. But we're thinking that there might be minor sections of facade that are neither, maybe they're flatboards or something. I'm thinking of the, the new project that Union Studio did where there's a section of those facades that are neither, uh, shingles or traditional clabberds. Um, and I, I, I think these, even the guidelines that are a little bit more discretionary will, especially with, um, the town staff pointing to the guidelines will make developers, builders, architects more intentional when they come to the planning board. So that they have rationale for why for some of the guidelines, they're not meeting those. Um, and so I think there's a li- there's an, there's an idea that there's a little bit of market pressure too in, in putting the preferences down.
Yeah, understood. That definitely makes sense. And I will say, I do like that we didn't limit it to all composite or no composite. You know, I do like that we left the options open. Um, you know, overall, I, I support this. I want to move it along. I think it's a, a great balance. I think it'll give everyone a more predictable process and a more predictable result. I would just say that when we get into, um, you know, the public forum, forum and the more nitty gritty, the siding is probably the one area that is most important to me and, um, that I'd love to dig in a little bit more. And I did also want to second what Tim said. Um, I live right in Barnstable Village and you do see a lot of the old, old historic buildings with the six over six, which I think is a really nice traditional Cape Cod look. So, um, adding a couple more alternatives for, um, the window options, I think, along the lines of what Tim stated would be great. Um, okay. So, um, at this time, is there anybody kind of at this point opposed to, uh, sending this along? It sounded like all board members were in support. Yeah, great. So, um, would somebody like to, uh, make a motion to offer our support?
I shall, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ray, take it away.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board communicate our support for the draft design regulations and guidelines to other town agencies and the public.
Excellent. Well said. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. Thank you, Bob. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. You have our support.
That's good.
Yeah, and job well done. Really. Andrea and Tim, thank you both very much.
Yeah, thanks for your continuing input.
Absolutely.
This was really helpful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both.
Sorry I was late.
We'll let it happen again. Thank you, Tim. No, that's great. Um, all right. So moving along, um, we, we've added, uh, two sections to the agenda, which I'm pretty excited about. So, um, one of them is uh, general correspondence, which is simply where we're just going to, uh, note each week or each meeting, uh, the correspondence that, uh, we've received. Um, this week we re- we received some correspondence from Ann Salas regarding solar and of course that is available on, uh, online. All right. And, uh, next up, chapter 91 notices. Twenty-five Cove Lane, Kettuitt Bay, replacement of pier, ramp and flow, Cove Lane Realty Trust. Uh, Jim, update on, uh, LCP?
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, uh, LCP has, uh, posted all of the, uh, the, the formal existing conditions and visioning chapter on the LCP website, barneswellcp.com, um, as well as the final vision statement. And my intent is to present that, both of those document, those key documents at the August Town Council meeting. If the, if the agenda doesn't fill, um, and then to return to phase two, uh, likely towards the end of September, uh, right now, my understanding is there's discussion on if, uh, additional members shall be sought for phase two. So that's, uh, stay tuned soon to come.
Cool. Awesome. Board, any comments, question, concerns about that? Okay, moving on. So the next, uh, item is a new section we're going to add at every meeting, which is a weekly recap. So Jim, Karen, uh, Kate, they do so much, um, in the community as well as other members of the, um, planning department. So all this will be is for um, Jim or Kate to just give us a recap of basically what took place within the department, um, for events between the last meeting and this meeting. So Kim, you have anything to share for this meeting?
Yeah, just real quickly, um, we'll get more robust as, as this process goes. Um, but today, actually, I was at the One Cape Summit, uh, which is an annual event with the Cape Cod Commission. And I'll just share my screen real quick that it'll do more justice to, uh, this. Let's see, so at the One Cape Summit, uh, at the Waco City Resort, uh, which is pretty nice and, uh, at, at that meeting, we had a lot of great speakers today. Uh, as you'll see, uh, Region One EPA, uh, Administrator, uh, discussing water quality efforts, uh, Rebecca Tepper, which is, uh, Mastee, uh, was the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, uh, Secretary discussing, uh, the new, uh, septic, um, regulations that came into play and also Bonnie Heppel, uh, from DEP, uh, followed up with further comments on that new septic, uh, regulations for watershed permits. Um, we then had a, had a really good discussion with Sarah Bronin, which, uh, highlighted what's called zoning atlas. Uh, so it's a new prod- project that came out of Cornell and it examines all the zoning across the country. Uh, and essentially is looking at why we don't have enough housing inventory. Uh, that's what it boils down to, but I would take a look at it if you just Google zoning atlas. Uh, they don't have everywhere just yet, but they're slowly working on it and, uh, they'll go, they're going to be releasing Massachusetts soon. Um, after that, there was some number of breakout sessions I, I followed into more zoning discussions. Um, but I know a couple of my colleagues were there and, uh, and talked and had good discussions on pond health and water quality, which obviously is a big issue here in Barnstable across the Cape. Uh, we got to listen to, uh, Senator Markey talk about all the, all the money brought into, to Cape Cod, which was good to hear. Um, and then actually had a really good, uh, presentation from these, these fellows. Nolan Gray, who's an author of, uh, Arbitrary Lines, which is a, a book that, um, that discusses, uh, the need for kind of zoning reform across the country, uh, which is a really good, quick read. Um, and then, uh, Allison from, uh, a private firm out of Arkansas that, uh, discusses kind of small housing lots and George Rutherford from, uh, the town of Vale, Colorado, and with similar issues about, uh, mo- mostly housing and, uh, you know, second, second homes and, and the need for housing for year round. Uh, so that, and then, uh, there was a few additional, uh, breakout sessions again for some of the early speakers. Uh, so a great, uh, in my opinion, that was a, it was a great conference, uh, day one, a couple of other colleagues are going for day two. Um, in addition to that last week, um, if, if you follow Town Council, which actually might've been the, the week before, but prior since the last time we met, a discussion of chapter, uh, one sixty-eight, uh, regulatory agreements in the voting threshold was discussed. Um, that discussion revolved around the, the Mass General Law for Housing Choice and the reduction of, uh, the quantum of vote, uh, to approve housing projects. Ultimately, the Town Council after a lengthy discussion, uh, withdrew the item. So there's no change to any of it, but, uh, it's a discussion that has been had, uh, for some time. And that's, that's, uh, in general, uh, it's some of the major issues over the last week or so.
Great, Jim. I appreciate that. Sounded like an awesome event today. Great. All right. So we'll keep that going every week, uh, just kind of learn about what happened, um, the week before. Uh, yes, Ray?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate? I just have a quick question, uh, on a development from last week that has to do with uh, the Kettuitt Elementary School. Uh, there were excavators and excavation going on behind the school. And as you know, we're in the process of transferring the ownership of that property from the town to, uh, the fire district. And I was wondering if Jim has any information on that as far as what was going on. I suspect maybe they were digging up the, the old fuel tanks, but I'm not sure. Uh, there was a big hole in the ground, multiple truckloads of, um, sand being dumped in there afterwards.
Yeah, that's, that sounds right, Ray. Uh, that's the only thing to my knowledge, uh, that was left. Uh, was the town's obligation for the removal of that tank and then to backfill. So that sounds, that sounds right. I don't know definitively. I'm certainly happy to, to find out.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, good question, Ray. Great. Okay, uh, moving along, look for a motion to approve the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three draft minutes.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Tim. A second?
This is Mary. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. Minutes are approved. Uh, future meetings, August fourteenth and August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. Jim, what do you got cooking for, uh, next meeting? Anything, um, in the works?
Not that, oh, actually for August, if, uh, so defer to Karen in terms of applications. Uh, I was going to give Karen tomorrow. If no applications, the thought was maybe to bring in DPW to have a discussion about the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Uh, and I could have more conversation with, uh, the chair, uh, if, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, that would be great. Definitely. Okay. All right. Well, so we'll, we'll stay in touch on that and, uh, figure out what's best for those two dates. Uh, anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns prior to adjournment?
Uh, the only thing, and actually I was going to bring it up earlier, but, um, I kind of forgot about is that wastewater thing. I think that'd be great for the board. Um, you know, to, um, be able to receive from the DPW and, you know, I don't know if maybe someone from the Health Department, I know there's some overlapping things going on. There's sewer that our DPW has, uh, come up with this wastewater plan, but then there's also been this wild Title V uh, change that's going on with septic systems and everything. And kind of those two issues are related and then could roll into some of our thoughts and developments, uh, looking into the future. So I don't know if, um, uh, you know, I, you, Jim, maybe you know, with DPW, are they up to speed on some of this Title V stuff or?
Yeah, they're putting together a document for, uh, for the public in terms of kind of the, the one-on-one on this new, um, new, uh, um, Title V issue and, and where Barnstable stands, uh, because of our, uh, you know, CWMP, we're, we're in pretty good standing, but they can speak, uh, knowledgeably to the issue. So I could certainly make sure that, you know, if, uh, we want to discuss that as well, that someone is present for that also.
I think if they're making a, a forward, um, you know, the general public document, kind of getting everyone up to speed, I think it'd be good to, you know, have a prep on that in addition to the, um, sewer development stuff, um, just to see everything contextualized.
I agree. Yeah. Great call, Tim. Okay, anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Tim? Tim?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.